Good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. I'm Heather Peckley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's February 2nd, 2021 regular meeting, being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council Chambers, will be go-ho to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council and City Manager, City Attorney and City Clerk will always be live unless there is an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton. And get her unmuted here. She's here. I just need to get her unmuted. You're still muted, but there you go.
I'm here.
There you go. Okay. Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Here.
Mayor Protem Schmanski. Let's see. Do we have him muted? Mayor Protem Schmanski, can you hear me?
Yes, here.
All right, and you're here. Okay, wonderful. Let's see. Councilmember Grabowski. He is still muted also.
Yeah.
There we go. Councilmember Martin Paniek is absent this evening. City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
Deputy Clerk.
Here.
City Assessor.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Okay, roll call complete. Oh, I do have, sorry, Mayor. I believe Planning and Zoning just joined us as well.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Planning and Zoning has now joined us as well. I just admitted them to the meeting. I'll unmute. Planning and Zoning, roll call.
Here.
Okay, roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those getting comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person in line. The meeting discussion topics for those who are going on the agenda tonight are: On the consent agenda is approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding next work session. Other agenda items: introduction of a new employee in the Police Department, consideration of a resolution allowing all taxpayers the right to protest by mail, consideration of approving changes to the oil and gas investment policy and spending rule, consideration of distributing an estate gift for Ramsdale Theater in the amount of $16,304 to the Ramsdale Regional Center of the Arts to partially fund a sound system upgrade wireless microphone system and hearing assist production loop. Consideration of approving and the development of an 18-hole disc course, disc golf course at First Street Beach Douglas Park. A report from Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development in consideration of a closed session, manager evaluation. We'll now take public comments, Heather.
Telephone number ending in 9954. Do you have a comment? Press *6 to unmute yourself. You can also press *9 to raise your hand. Again, telephone number 9954. If you have no comment, I will move on. Telephone number 4350, do you have a comment? Telephone number 4350?
No comment.
All right, thank you. I see there are several others that are joining us, but I believe you're here for items that are on the agenda. If I miss somebody, please press *9, otherwise we will move on. Mayor, that's all the public comments.
Thank you. Consent agenda. All items, all agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Tonight consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, and notification regarding next work session. Are there any council members that would like an item removed from the consent agenda? Hearing done. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Grabowski, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second, Bachman.
We have a motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski.
Yes.
And Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business: introduction of a new employee, police officer. Pete Glass, are you there?
I am. Good evening, councilmembers. A few months ago, we began a process of hiring a new employee at the City Police Department. It's a pretty detailed process. It involves a two-step interview process, thorough background check, medical screening, psychological screening. After that process, there was a clear leader, and Ted Schmeling was offered a conditional offer of employment. Ted has started his employment with us and is beginning his field training period. So I'll turn it over to Ted to introduce himself and maybe say a few things about himself.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am Ted Schmeling. Thanks for having me here tonight. A couple of things about myself. I'm from Manistee, graduated from Manistee High School, did two years at West Shore Community College and then transferred up to Lake Superior State University where I got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. After that, I got a job with the Manistee County Sheriff's Office where I worked for about a year and a half. And now I'm here working for the city and I'm very grateful to have this opportunity.
Well, thank you for that introduction. Ted, I want to welcome you. I am thrilled to have you on board and I'm sure you're going to be a valuable asset to this department. And I can't wait to see all your accomplishments in the future. Again, welcome aboard. Any other council members want to welcome him aboard?
Welcome, Ted.
Welcome aboard, Ted.
Welcome.
So Ted, you know, I'm sure that you're very proud of your father, Steve, and no more proud than he is of you. So you're a blue-blood family now in Manistee, so congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for joining our force. We appreciate you. Moving on. If there's nothing else, we'll move on. Consideration of a resolution allowing all taxpayers the right to protest by mail. This resolution will allow all taxpayers the ability to protest by mail and not have to make a personal appearance before the Board of Review. According to MCL 211.30, parentheses, 8, the statute has always allowed non-residents to protest by mail. This will allow everyone to protest by mail. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution allowing all taxpayers to protest by mail. Is there a motion?
Schmanski, I'll make the motion.
Grabowski, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. I'm just curious, the ones that are non-homesteaders that are mailing their protests in, are you going by the postmark on the mail as determining whether they made the deadline or not, Molly?
It will be the postmark by mail and as long as, with this March Board of Review being very different, we will have another virtual meeting after the two Board of Review meetings to swoop up all of these things that could come in after the date.
So if we pass this ordinance, which just says received, which seems to mail a little bit ambiguous, I'm just wondering if you're going to adhere to the postmark date as, you know, the end date? Or if somebody drops it off for some reason, how are they going to mark it at the?
If they drop it off, it will be date stamped when they get the mail out of the box and then we will be collecting all of that stuff and distributing it at that time.
Okay, so I don't need to worry about that word in there. It just made me think about asking the question.
No, we're going to do everything we can absolutely humanly possible do to do this year to make sure that everybody can be heard.
Anybody else? Hearing done. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving change to the gap, to the oil and gas investment policy and spending rule. The Oil and Gas Investment Board oversees the investment of the Oil and Gas Fund pursuant of section 260 of the fortified ordinance of the City of Manistee. The Board has adopted investment policy and spending rule for this purpose. Because of significance of the Oil and Gas Fund to the city, the Oil and Gas Investment Policy requires City Council approval on any change, changes to the policy. The Board has recommended a change in the policy, lowering the spending rule percentage from 4.0% to 3.5% over two physical years and is presenting it to council for ratification. Ed, could you explain the reasoning for this change?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. The Oil and Gas Spending Rule is designed to kind of balance between the current needs of the city in terms of spendable amount for capital improvements and preserving the purchasing power of this endowment fund, the Oil and Gas Fund, for the future. And there's a few determinations or determining factors that impact that. One is your rate of return on the portfolio, which is directly related to your asset allocation. And the other thing would be the percentage that you can take out on an annual basis. Originally, several years ago, we had a 4.5% spending rule. And as this fund has grown over the years and we've had really good returns, the council previously approved a recommendation by the Oil and Gas Board to lower that down to 4%. We've had, we're in a similar environment. Since this was started in March of 2009, we've had compounded rates of return of around 10%. And the last two years have been particularly beneficial. So the outlook for investment returns moving forward, however, is not as great as it has been over the last 10 years, primarily because bond yields are so low and bonds do make up a percentage of our portfolio. But also the outlook for equities, even though the market's doing very well right now in the long term, is not expected to be as high as it has been. So by moving the spending rule down from 4 to 3.75% and then to 3.5% the following year, what you're really doing is taking advantage of higher portfolio levels so that your spendable amount that goes to the city's capital improvement fund stays fairly constant over the next couple of years. But you're allowing that fund to preserve its purchasing power because the lower expected rates of returns in future years, coupled with inflation, kind of indicate that a 4% spending rule is probably a little bit too aggressive. Our fund advisor, Woody Hubel from Bartlett &amp; Company, manages a number of these types of portfolios for endowments. And it's a trend in the industry to start to move those down a little bit from where they have been in the past. So the Board looked at this, discussed it, and thinks that this is a prudent move. In terms of the impact that it would have on the amount that's going to the city's capital improvement fund, last year or this current fiscal year, it was about $421,000. And because of the run-up in the portfolio value, if we move it down to 3.75%, the amount for this upcoming fiscal year would be $414,000, so virtually the same. So that just indicates why it's good timing to do this. The other thing to keep in mind is the early years in the formula, which is a 12-quarter moving average, have a lower portfolio value and those will start to drop off and be replaced by higher levels as we move forward, which will also raise the base value by which that spending rule percentage is multiplied against. And so we should be in good shape to keep the spendable amount flat or slightly rising as time evolves. I don't know if anybody else has any questions on that, but that's the rationale behind asking for that to be reduced.
Does anybody have any questions? Hearing done. At this time, council could take action to approve a change to the Oil and Gas Investment Policy and Spending. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Bachman.
Grabowski, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment. I think it's too aggressive and too much too soon to try to project what's going to happen in the future. That's my comment.
Mr. Bradford, this is not carved in stone. This can be changed at any time, right?
Yes, the process is that the Oil and Gas Investment Board, you know, reviews that. And if it was deemed that there was a need to raise that back up, then they could make that recommendation to council or make that policy change and then have council ratify that.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing done. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
No.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of distributing, distributing an estate gift for Ramsdale Theater in the amount of $16,304. The Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts partially fund a sound system upgrade wireless microphone system and hearing assist production loop. The estate gift for Ramsdale Theater in 2017 by the Julian Scott Trust. The Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts has identified the sound system upgrade in the theater that would be an appropriate use of these funds. It is requested that these funds be released to them to fund a portion of the project. All additional funds needed to complete the project have already been secured. At this time, council could take action to approve the distribution of the Julian Scott Estate gift for the Ramsdale Theater to the Ramsdale Regional Center of the Arts for use in a sound system upgrade. Is there a motion?
Schmanski, I'll make that motion.
Grabowski, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or concerns?
Is the whole fund going to be used or is it a partial of some of the funds?
Councilmember Grabowski, the $16,300 estate gift will be added to other grant funds and other donations that the RRCA has raised. The total project cost is about $75,000. So it'll consume that entire gift.
Okay, thank you.
And that gift had no restrictions on it. We would be doing this, correct?
It did have restrictions, David. It had to be used for the Ramsdale Theater itself, not the building. So this fits exactly within the purpose and intent of the donor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing done. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmanski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving the development of an 18-hole disc golf course at First Street Beach Douglas Park. The City of Manistee Parks Commission has been working cooperatively with Public Works Department to develop a disc golf course within the City of Manistee Park System. The conceptual layout was presented to City Council at the January 12th session. At this time, council could take action to approve the development of an 18-hole disc golf course at First Street Beach and authorize the Parks Commission and Public Works to seek out funding, including but not limited to grants, sponsorships, and donations. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'd like to second that, Grabowski, and then I have a question.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I went down and looked at that. Is there some of the tree going to be cut out around? I thought when you talked about the dog run down there, some of those trees going to be cut out down there behind there? Because it's pretty crowded.
This is Jeff McCula. Yeah, Councilman Grabowski, the intent is not to actually cut trees down but to thin out some of the brush and the overgrowth. And my staff has been working with volunteer groups led by the Parks Commission and they've already started some of that work. But the goal is not to do any clear cutting or tree removal as such.
This is going behind the dog run, Jeff?
Yeah, and it's important to understand that if you looked at the layout that they did, a lot of the, a lot of the course is walking paths. So we'll use the wood chips that we generate from chip and brush and cutting trees in the city to create those paths. And then the, we were fortunate enough to have actual experts as part of our Parks Commission in disc golf. And they brought in some industry experts as well. And so they've laid out the holes to kind of work with the land and the park as it is. And then, and then create paths that link you from one point to the next.
Okay, when Tim O'Connor presented that, I thought that they were going to be involved in this too, that the city wasn't doing it all.
Right, this is a cooperative effort between the Parks Commission and the DPW. Certainly, it's our park and will be our responsibility once it's, once it's constructed. And what I've offered is the ability to form and pour the concrete for the pads as such. And then also, we've got the wood chips, like I mentioned, which we just dispose of. So that would be a nice way to reuse those materials. And then we also salvaged a lot of piling from the marina when the docks were replaced. And I didn't have a specific use for them when we salvaged them, just kind of knowing that at some point they would be valuable. And so we'll be using some of those to actually create obstacles, such as the trees do. That's part of, part of the game.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do have a question. What is the city's liability if somebody gets injured by a flying disc over there? How are we covered?
Well, we would be covered through our liability carrier. So if somebody claims an injury as a result of the use of the city property, they can file a claim and we can submit it to our insurance company.
Well, as City Manager and Jeff on DPW, what do you, and the Parks Commission, what is their feeling as far as how likely is an accident to occur? I'm thinking of somebody walking by and getting hit in the eye.
Yeah, and I've reviewed the layout. I've actually walked the majority of it with Tomalay. And, you know, the layout of the course is strategically intended not to conflict with other uses. Even though it goes past the tennis courts and around the dog park, it's not, it wasn't laid out so that those two would be in conflict of each other. If you look at that map and refer to the, kind of the dash path that they have, it's actually walking past some of those things. So I think there's probably a very low likelihood of that happening, although it could. And there's far more risk, if you will, of our playgrounds than this course would offer.
Okay, I think I just needed to have you restate that so the public was aware of it. I've never played disc golf, so as far as I'm concerned, you just throw it into a basket. Is it like golf where you start at a tee someplace so that you're a little bit closer to the basket? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I've actually never played it either, but the, they're weighted frisbees, if you will. So there's more control of them, although I'd probably be the first one that could not control one, just like I can't with regular golf. But yeah, you start at a tee box and there's a fairway. It may have obstacles such as existing trees or posts. And the goal is to get it in that basket at the end.
Okay, well, then that way, the walking part of it, you're just walking to the next tee. I think I get a better visual in my.
Yes, and the fairways are, there's a lot of walking along there too.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Big Schmanski. You know, first of all, I have to applaud the idea that people are creative enough to look at, you know, new ways of being able to use our existing park property to expand the opportunity for people to recreate. I think it's a great idea. But I do wonder what the overall expected cost of the project will be and what will be the follow-on maintenance?
So the group has not developed the overall budget exactly yet. I want to say it was in the $25,000 range. Most of the cost is in pouring the pads, creating signage that depicts, you know, what number of hole you're on, and then the baskets themselves. And that's really what is being requested tonight is that the Parks Commission, working with my staff, is seeking council's permission to use and solicit for those funds in the city's, in the city's name. The ongoing maintenance is actually very little. We already maintain the majority of the space that's there. And the space that goes through the wooded areas will remain wooded and may need a little bit of trimming from time to time. And then periodically, we'll need to spread wood chips on the paths. But the intention of the Parks Commission is, and they've already actually formed a group that's kind of mirrored with our Adopt the Park program to get volunteers to go out and do those type of things. But certainly, if that volunteer group disappeared, I don't see this as a huge draw on our maintenance requirements. The other thing that's, the other thing that's very appealing about this concept to me, thinking short-term and long-term, short-term, it has very little impact on the park itself, but has the opportunity to bring a lot more people into the park and for a new use. And I'm always looking at the way down the road and even a negative side. The removal of this would be very easy. So if the park needed to be reused for some other purpose and we certainly had to pull out, you know, pop out 18 of these pads and 18 of the baskets, it'll leave very little footprint on the park as well. it'll leave very little footprint on the park as well.
So just to clarify, where is the $25,000 coming from?
The intent of the of the committee is to fundraise that and be able to provide and purchase the equipment and the materials without using any budgetary monies.
Okay.
And I've been very clear with them that if if they fall short and we need to use some of the parks budget money, then I need to be able to plan for that within the budgeting process.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
One follow-up, if I could. Is the intent that the park or this frisbee golf to be dog-friendly? On leash, dogs on leash allowed, or is it going to be not allowed to have pets on this particular course? Or has that not been brought up yet?
It hasn't been discussed. We have a no dogs on the beach policy within the park system. But we don't have that policy anywhere else in the parks, and I wouldn't see why we would want to restrict pets along the course.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Here in town, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Notice, communications, and announcements. Tonight, we're going to hear from the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and the economic development part of that. At this time, Ms. Bytworth and Mr. Miller will report. Who's going to go first?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Stacy Bytworth, and I think I'll take the lead, and then I'll kick it over to Mark once I'm finished. So I think Mark has a presentation he was going to pull up for us. So again, thank you for having us here tonight. So I'm just going to quickly go through kind of a recap of the last year of 2020 of the Chamber of Commerce. So our mission is to build a dynamic and sustainable organization to serve the business workforce and economic development needs of all in Manistee County. Our team consists of myself, Christina Baika, the Director of Communications and Investor Relations, and Mark Miller, the Director of Economic Development. I'm going to touch a little bit on our advocacy efforts because that was a huge part of 2020, leading us into this, obviously, pandemic that we're still currently in. Our advocacy is a critical element of our work, and it obviously showed last year and into this year. We're a member of the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance. And just to give councilmembers a little overview of the alliance, it's a sixteen-chamber and economic development organization coalition that I'm fortunate to be able to chair that organization through 2020 and now into 2021. We, our coalition is focused on rural-centric policies, business policies for our communities. Obviously, in rural northern Michigan, we have different priorities here than some of our larger counterparts downstate. So we banded together to focus on a lot of that for our business communities. And then being able to lead this group puts Manistee County, city, kind of in the forefront of a lot of our legislators, the governor and her administration. So we are fortunate to kind of go through and be able to coordinate a lot of our efforts last year with certain decision-makers in the administration. And then obviously, one of our biggest takeaways were was the reopening of Regions Six and Eights, Six and Eight. And I was fortunate to be able to have the opportunity to stand on the stage with our governor to advocate to open our businesses up in our region. So going into this year, we had a three-part strategic planning session where we relooked at everything with our policies and reorganized kind of the alliance. And kind of we called it Alliance 2.3.0 because we're moving at such a fast pace. But our new policies going in are going to be to support the success of existing northern Michigan businesses, develop and attract talented workforce in northern Michigan, and compete, maximize the competitiveness of rural northern Michigan. So those are our three really priorities, and we'll go into a deeper dive that you'll have some more correspondence coming out through the year. The other thing I do want to touch on, you know, with our advocacy efforts is a lot of our communications. We've tried really hard with our small team over the course of 2020 to really be there as advocates for our businesses and really anything we can do to support them and, you know, what they were thrown at in 2020 and currently still right now. So we gathered some data that we've looked at, and we had over seventy-nine communications last year with our e-blast newsletters and a lot of our COVID-19 information updates, as well as our legislative updates. Mark, do you mind going down? And then just wanted to recap a little bit, too, is our investors, our membership. We had twenty-eight new members for 2020, which I thought was really unique considering the time we were in last year, and twelve of those were in the city. We had ribbon cuttings. We had eleven. Four of those were in the city, and that equated to sixty-one new jobs and over $4.6 million. Now, this does not capture all of them because there are other dollar investments out there that weren't captured in this number because some people might not have been comfortable with having ribbon cuttings or grand open ceremonies. The other thing I want to focus on is the chamber that one of our leading programs through the chamber is leadership development. And, you know, every year we have a leadership program. So I want to thank the city. We currently have a city employee right now going in. Kaylee Owens in the program right now, so thank you for sending her. And then last year's class, they had the big day of serving. That's kind of the project that's branded with the leadership program, and they were able to serve 260 families in our community through a drive-through food drive, a food drive through the, to be able to serve those families. So they had to pivot from their original plan, but I thought, you know, that's something that these leaders stepped up in our community to do. And part of that program is we have these leaders stepping up on boards. So I can tell you from the class last year, we have one board member that is now has a seat on the DDA, and then we also have one of those board members on the chamber. So I hope in the future that we can kind of do, where are they now? Take all our leadership cohorts to see where these individuals are serving in the community, and then also within their companies, if they've, you know, risen into different leadership roles within their companies. So I do want to focus a little bit on our business resource. So our COVID response, obviously, 2020, we all know, extremely challenging for everybody. But business retention, what we did for our business retention, and we have a number up there of 165, those could be virtual contacts, emails, calls directly to our businesses, checking in with them, what do they need? How can we be a resource? How can we connect you with things that are happening throughout our area in the state during your, basically, your time of crisis? And so I do want to point out that grant funding, we scored many, many grants over the course of 2020 and into this year. That was over $333,000 that were awarded to businesses in our community. And that's a significant number, but it only scratched the surface of the need in the community. So just keep that in mind. So with that, one of our programs that we did start last year in October was the Manistee County Cash Program. And what that was is it's a shop local program. So we currently have over $33,000 that's been purchased through that program. We've had Consumers Energy did a match earlier in 2020 that it was a match, a one-to-one match. So if you purchased $100, they matched $100. So we wanted to make sure that we could put that money back into our community, into our local businesses. So that's one of the programs that was started out of last year where we had to pivot and kind of figure out how we could help our business community. And then I just want to touch on our board of directors, too. We have a very diverse board of directors. And I want to thank Jeff McCula. He served on our board for, I think, over eight or nine years. So I want to thank him for his service. And then also, we're excited to have Thad Taylor serve on the board. I know it may be for a short time, but we're happy to have him join our board to kind of further our mission and, you know, really happy to have the support of the city and our partners that we do with the Chamber of Commerce and really trying to just create a really great business climate here in Manistee and throughout the county. And then before I turn it over to Mark for economic development, I do want to kind of recap a little bit about that is we started the economic development arm back in 2018 with the chamber to kind of be that point organization for any development or for a small business that wants to get started or a young entrepreneur. So I want to thank the city for their investment and support and, you know, for the chamber kind of taking the leap into economic development and just say how great it is to have, you know, the city council and different partners at the city to help through that. Because it's, I think you'll see, and Mark can take a little deeper dive into economic development, that what potential this community has, and we're seeing all that with so much growth that's happening in downtown and surrounding the city. So it's exciting times, and I just, you know, even with us being in a pandemic, that we still have all this economic development happening. So our city is something special, and we want to make sure that we continue to push forward and grow our area. So I want to thank you, and then I will go ahead and turn it over to Mark.
Before we go on, is there any questions for Stacy? Councilmembers, any questions?
I think Linda's trying to talk, but she's on mute.
I have a question for Stacy. I noticed on your bullet points, your three major topics. You know, my most favorite, my new most favorite one is high-speed internet throughout the county. So can you give us an update on what kind of push the chamber is helping out with that?
The alliance is actually, that's one of our main, we're looking at to be competitive. So one of our new priorities with the alliance is to get more focus on broadband. So we are going to make sure that we're engaged in that. And I know, Linda, you had sent me an email, so I'm definitely going to be participating where we can in that because obviously, that is a huge component to the growth and success of our area.
Thank you. Just wanted to get a plug for it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Here in town, Mr. Miller, I guess you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. It's good to be back in front of you, and thank you for the opportunity to give this report. Just a quick highlight on our 2020 major projects. You see here that we have nine different projects. This is, it's up from five that we had going into 2020. And so there's, as Stacy was saying, a good deal of interest in Manistee and developing here and moving forward. And we've had several of these pop up in 2020 despite the pandemic. And we've capitalized with our capacity and having an economic development program that the city supports. We've been able to develop on, develop those programs and those projects, working with the developers that have come in and expressed interest. So let's just take a quick spin through these. First is one to almost check off the, check off the list is the West Shore Community College Manistee Center. And the thing I would like to say here is that even though the work's nearly complete on the building, that $5 million of investment from the college has really spurred a lot of interest in downtown. And during the year after the news kind of came about with the project moving forward and breaking ground, we received a number of phone calls of people who were interested in investing in downtown and exploring opportunities for businesses. So we worked with them on that. And so it's very positive. Also, I want to just plug that the DDA also plays a supportive role in here, and that's where a lot of the work currently remains is working through and making sure from a DDA perspective that the agreements to support the college project are indeed being met. The second project is still ongoing and it's underway with many, many discussions. So there's a good deal of work on the downtown gateway project, and it's transformative vision for the entrance to our downtown. So we are working with the partners, assisting developers. And now, as of 2020, we now wear several hats here. So we're the chamber with the DDA Executive Director, and we're also, you know, working with the chamber and facilitating conversations. So there's a lot of work here. Then a good deal of interest lately with meetings. And so we're, a lot of work going into that project. The third one is the Lake Shore Hotel. This came about in the summertime with an opportunity to to have the current owners of the Lake Shore Motel retire and put their parcel up for a development opportunity. Stacy and I were in from the beginning at a showing, actually. And so we've been working to facilitate development of this project, to facilitate discussions, and move through any barriers to development. And I think it's been a success that a hospitality project like the hotel has been able to move this quickly through the pandemic timeframe, and that's a very positive step. And we've made sure to make the developers understand that we're willing to work with them as a community. The next one is for Conos on Manistee River. And there's a good deal of work going into this project, many hours going in. Want to thank the council for your involvement, engagement, and engagement in providing the city's first Oprah Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act incentive to Ted to help him with the financing of the renovations. There's a lot of work to do in 2021, and we'll be working with Ted closely to make sure that he meets his goal of opening sometime before the slaybell parade and event. So we're working through that with Ted. I think you, as you know, this is one of the redevelopment-ready community sites that the community identified for redevelopment. So it's been on your list for several years, and it's good to finally get an active developer and business to going into that, into that property. The Monroe Cottages project might be dormant right now. That's the homes, the duplexes of the Wagner Center. And we put a lot of hours into that. So I listed that to let you know. We worked through some issues with the MISHDA application with the developer and put some time into it. And, you know, sometimes with economic development projects, it does take a few years to get something rolling and get it to a groundbreaking. And sometimes it takes a lot of hours and you don't see any fruit. But it's dormant for now, and we hope that it might get resurrected as it moves forward. Same developer working on the river water development project downtown. We are working to assist them where needed, and they are moving forward with an other application to MISHDA for financing of the project. And so we hope that that will move forward as well. Would also like to point out that another one that's been added is the Northern Hotel on Washington Street, Street 149, 141, Washington Street, back on the market, and we've been working actively with potential investors to take that property and to some incentives. Rough shape, but there are opportunities for historic development, and we're hopeful that that will come back in. Getting back to some of the original projects with development, Thoroughbred Boat Company still moves forward. In fact, you probably can see this on the social media outlets, but they received their first hole, and they're getting ready to start putting that first product together. It has been a bit of work this year, but we're happy that they're continuing on their quest to return boat building to Manistee. And so we're working with them, and that does take some time. And then finally, we saw the Hillcrest Village Development break ground in 2020 on the north end. And the bottom line here is that they, the Joe Hollander Group came to Manistee as a result of a chamber came to Manistee as a result of a Chamber Developer Day in 2018 that attracted new development. And so when you look at the downtown gateway and the Hillcrest Village Development, those came about because of a Developer Day where we attracted people to show off some of our priority sites. And we will be doing that again in the coming, in the current year. So I will shift up. Stacy, do you have anything to add as a result of all that?
I'll let you keep on going. You're doing a good job, Mark.
Fair enough. Well, let's just cover the numbers real quick. We've seen an uptick in the number of engagements and contacts. And we've been tracking this a little bit differently from the middle of the year. Actually, thanks because of Councilmember Beaton's suggestion. But we've had a total of 347 contacts. We're roughly up about 40% when you look quarter over quarter, the first two parts of the year to the last, last two, two quarters. So we're seeing a significant amount of, of interest. Now, a lot of this is increased involvement with the Lake Shore Hotel development with the Gateway and also with Ted Fricono. So you're seeing a lot of those engagements, but most of those are inside the city. 159 for downtown, 71 within the city total. And then, so we're, we're doing a lot of work and talking and engaging and having meetings and moving things forward. I also want to point out here the business retention visits. Obviously COVID has changed how we interact with people. You saw earlier 165 COVID business retention contacts checking in on people and making sure that they have what they need to survive 2020. We still had a program where we had our sit-down business retention visits, but those were done virtually. And so that is more of a traditional business retention visit. We still track them separately. They have slowed down, obviously, because of the, the impact in-person meetings. But to show you that we're still meeting that and doing that work, although we are being flexible and meeting people where they are. So as I wrap up here with the final section, our vision for the coming year. We will have another Developer Day like we had in 2018 to attract new investors. And we hope that we have enough sites that will be of interest for new housing, new business ventures, new, whatever it is that they're interested in. We'll make sure that they have what they need and try to bring new, new businesses to Manistee. We also want to grow our own. So we'll have an entrepreneurial day in 2021 and work with existing residents, whoever would like to contemplate making a step into owning their own business, starting their own business. And so we've put together a program with some outside experts and we'll be bringing them in for Entrepreneurial Day here in 2021. We'll continue to make the Chamber the point of contact, making business easier in Manistee is our, is our motto. Then we'll also be advancing development of all the projects you've heard about and taking on any new ones that might come in that would be of a large value to the community. And then finally, we will continue with our business retention visits, working with companies, trying to make sure that they have the tools and, and the ability to, to, to make their business work and even grow. We do have examples of, of business growth even in 2020, moving into 2021. So we'll continue to work with our, our business sector and build that resiliency for our local economy. So that's our vision for 2021. A lot of work here. There is no shortage of it, which is a good thing for the area. We, we again appreciate your support of the program. And I will stop here, Mayor, and ask if there are any questions for Stacy and I.
Any questions from council?
Mayor, if I
Go ahead, Stacy.
I just want to add a couple more things on to the economic development side. As you know, we position the Chamber to be kind of the point of contact, but I just want to let everyone know it's obviously a team effort. Mark's the point for economic development in our office, but Christina, it helps out as well as myself. And then a lot of our Board of Directors, our Economic Development Council and a lot of city staff is very involved as well. I know Thad puts a lot of time in as well. So I just want to thank everybody because, again, it's, it's not just one person or just our team. It's been a lot of work on, you know, a lot of individuals that believe to make our community better. So it's a lot of hours and I, I want to give my team, Mark and Christina, kudos because they have stepped up to the plate and really gone above and beyond on a lot of supporting different projects and things that have been thrown at us in 2020. So you've, you've got a good group of leaders at the Chamber. So I just want to end with that and then I'll stop talking unless people have questions.
Great job, Stacy, and a really well-done report. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I do have a couple of questions and I don't know who to address them to. And it's, and most of them are involved the project list. For the West Shore Community College, who can we reach out to? I, I suppose it would be Scott Ward of the college and find out. I know he came to council at one point and said, there should be one program in the mix where you can, you can get your two-year degree right at this location in Manistee. And I want to know if that's been expanded at all and what that, and what degree programs a person could possibly earn just by going to school at that location. And I don't know who to address that to.
I can, what I would suggest, Linda, is I would be happy to get you Scott Ward's information and Crystal Young. Those would probably be the two contacts that I would, if you wanted to shoot an email to, that they probably could get you that information.
That'd be great. And then for the, the downtown, the Gateway Project and for the Lake Shore Motel Project, I know those have to go for the Planning Commission at one time. And I'm just wondering if you have a feel when that's going to happen? And I see Mike Sicola's online too, so maybe he has an answer. I don't know.
Mark, go ahead. I'll give that one to you.
Mike.
Or Mark.
Mike or Mark?
Mike or Mark.
Let me, let me jump in and Mike is always welcome to correct me if I go afield. You know, on the, on the Lake Shore Hotel project, they are currently working on a site plan and an application. So the best I can say is that, you know, that application being turned in will be made available to the public is probably imminent. But we can't say for certain if they're, if they're ready and finalized to, to go. So I will put it there and see if Mike has anything to add and then I'll come back with the gateway.
No, Mark pretty much nailed it. I mean, we can't, I mean, they can give us a pretty good idea. We expect to see it fairly quickly here. So I know the public's been anticipating it as far as, you know, when are they going to see a plan? I do tell them to, you know, please, you know, be patient on it because even if they submit a plan, we still have to review it, call a Site Plan Review Committee and offer our thoughts on that as well. So there's still a process that is required, the, that we go through as well as we need to go through just to make sure we're getting the best, you know, possible project for Manistee. So, you know, we, we do have to work through that. We usually look at about between 30 and 45 days. Our department's been able to get through them fairly quickly. And with the Chamber, you know, kind of helping us out here and we've been, you know, kind of involved in it from, at an early phase, it's really helped out to kind of streamline everything. So once we do get an application, I do anticipate it going through very quickly. So as far as when we will have it turned around. And then it will be available, obviously, before the Planning Commission. We typically put out the plans on the site for about a week out. And we're going to obviously try to get this one out a little bit earlier. And with, if they, you know, let's say they submitted within the next 10 days to meet the, the requirement for the zoning enabling act, we have to put it out in the paper and notice at least 15 days out. So I know the public's really anticipating this project, but please be patient so we can get it right.
Thanks for
I'm being patient. It's just there's a, you're absolutely right. The public is, is anxious, very anxious to see the plans because they have lots of opinions on it already. Same with the Gateway Project, so.
Yeah, and I, I, let me first, Councilmember Beaton, go back to that, the second part of your question. Before I answer on the gateway, I do want to say thanks to, to Mike for, for laying that out. Following the process is real important. I do want to take a little bit of credit for the, on the Chamber's behalf for facilitating a, a number of conversations on that Lake Shore project. We've been engaged with city staff and planning to make sure that we can make business a little easier. So I want to thank many of the staff members who are on the call who've been participating in that. Of course, the city manager, but, but also Jeff Ricula and City Engineer Sean Middleton. So we, we've had a good deal of conversation about that project and it's made, made things more understood in a way, in terms of the process. And I think that gives a developer ease and we hope to maybe do that in the future. Onto the Gateway Project, Councilmember. The, the project is, is not quite at the stage where it's ready to, to move forward with an application. We're working through details and negotiations on, on that project. And so, you know, it's still in that stage where we're not quite ready for any additional community engagement. But my hope is that we'll move forward on that and be able to, to go back to the Planning Commission at some point in 2021. But right now I think there's a number of, of questions that are remaining. So we'll, we'll get to that and, but it's not as imminent as the, as the other hotel project.
I am concerned about the Monroe cottages and the fact that it's dormant and it's the same developer who's working on River Water Housing. I would be devastated. I personally, I think it was, it's just a nice enhancement to quit senior housing around the Wagner Center. So what is your contingency plan to find a different developer to help out with that if they can't get the funding?
Yes, and so let me just take one step backwards on the, on why it's dormant. I use that word. I'm not sure that the, the developers would use the word dormant, but they do have a little bit of a pause on that one, waiting for an opportunity to apply for funding. There were some issues and we spent, the Chamber spent a good deal of hours working through some of that because of the location of the Business Park in relation to that project, the Monroe cottages project. So we tried to work through some of that and I think they'll, they're very willing to come back and go back for funding in the future. But in, in case of, of a need for Plan B, which I think it's, it's possible, we would like to approach the, the owners and see if there is a way to entertain additional projects. Because I think that there are developers who are looking for space like that in that location that would be a very positive project. So perhaps we can talk to interested developers at a Developer Day or some point during the year and be able to explore that with the Wagner Center folks.
I might send you an email on that, Mark, just, just, just to give you some suggestions on where I think funding could come from, a different formula. So, and just to see if you've got any input on it. I'm sure you've heard of this kind of funding. So I'll just let that go for now. But we do need to get that going and I thought the little duplexes were lovely. I, I think that would be just such a nice touch for that area. So that said, I won't take up any more of your time on it.
Well, I would welcome the conversation and I think that we would welcome the conversation, Stacy and I. So I, I am the team, so thank you very much. We, and for everyone, we would welcome any ideas for either new developers, you know of someone, or new ways to fund projects. We certainly are open to having those discussions with you. So please feel free to reach out.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, while, while Jim's waiting to unmute, I, I'd just like to compliment the, the Chamber. I think our investment in you with economic development has certainly paid off already. And I am excited to see what the future is. But since I've been back in Manistee, I have not seen such a, a renaissance in our economic development as I've seen over the last year and a half in, in spite of the pandemic. And again, I know that you guys have been working tirelessly on our behalf, so I want to thank you for that. I, I would kind of single out Ted Fricono's and the comments that he made publicly about how well he was treated, not only by the Chamber of Commerce, but also by the city and how important that is for us in our future. Again, you know, there's the best advertising in the world is word of mouth. And with people like Ted and others, this is how, you know, we, we kind of, you know, move forward in a really strong and positive way. The, I think the Developer Days, I'm looking forward to what we're going to see next as far as, you know, economic development in Manistee. I, I know there's a lot of other areas. I'm excited to see that the, the Northern Hotel is back on the list. You know, I think that, again, could kind of bring a new spark to the whole north side of Manistee as well as kind of broadening the DDA footprint. So I'm looking forward to see what's going to happen there. But again, very well done over the last couple of years.
Done, Nick?
I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. What I wanted to know is, I don't know if the city wants to answer it, if Mike can answer it. What is being done with the buildings, with the plywood on downtown? Are we still under, that they have a license yet to do this? Or are we moving forward because it's still a blight downtown when you look at these buildings?
You're speaking about the blighted building and blight enforcement that's taking place downtown on the, the building across from the brewery and their old Rosmaric Jewelry, is what you're talking about?
Yep.
Right. Um, I do not have an update on that. I, my last update was the city was enforcing their blight enforcement, which is outside of the zoning. And I would have to turn it over to the other city staff to answer that question.
Councilmember Grubowski, in those situations, there's been citations issued and it's in the court process. So George, if I'm mistaken there, correct me, but we are in the process issuing citation of the Rosmaric properties and the other ones in the court process as we speak.
There, there were citations issued, Councilmember Grubowski, and we are in the process of still discussing with the property owners further ways to resolve it without having to issue additional citations.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you for your presentation. This is unusual times. Appreciate all your hard work. There are wonderful things happening in the city of Manistee. Keep up the good work and keep smiling. I can't believe how energetic you two are. You're always on the go. Good for you.
Now I'm, now I'm going to bed, so thank you.
Moving on, concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, areas, activities or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone, per comments, limited to five minutes. Letters given to council will not be publicly read. Each person waiting in a virtual, virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather, you want to take over and go on to officials and staff and council members?
Okay. Telephone number ending in 9954. Do you have a comment? Or do you wish to pass? If you wish to comment, press star six to unmute yourself. Again, that's number 9954. Okay, moving on. Telephone number ending in 4350. Do you have a comment? Press star six. Okay, nothing from 4350. So we'll move on to the last one, which is number 3037. Telephone number ending in 3037. If you have a comment, please press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to officials and staff. City manager?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Finance director?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
DPW director?
Just one item. Mother Nature doesn't always cooperate with our efforts, but this year, we do have the ice skating rink open and ice is pretty good. So I heard a little rumor that there are skates available in each of your sizes and I would hope that the council can get out and enjoy it. Thank you.
Police chief?
I don't have anything other things.
Fire chief?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
City engineer?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
City assessor?
Nothing. Thank you.
Planning and zoning?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
I have a question for Thad and/or maybe the mayor, but I've been asked by citizens often, has the city considered buying that land where the hotel's at and maybe save me after redevelopment later, creating a committee to work on that or... A lot of people think that the city should own that mega park or the city should own that and, and control the development of it later where they put a hotel there. I don't have an answer for that. I don't, we haven't talked about it at city council level. So I'm curious what the answer to that question would be, please.
Well, I, if you want, I can give, you know, my thoughts on it. And number one, it's my understanding the property's listed for over $2 million and the city just is not in a position, in my mind, to make a purchase of that magnitude. Secondly, is that would, if, if the city bought it, it would take it off the tax rolls. And currently, there's about 20% of the property in the city is off the tax rolls, either owned by, you know, city, the county, the schools, or somebody that's not paying taxes. And plus, if we, if we did purchase it, the logical thing would be to, to add it to our park portfolio. But, you know, one could argue that we have sufficient number of parks. So that, that would be my rationale if somebody was wondering why the city wasn't going to purchase it.
Okay, Mayor, is that, yeah, your thought too, I guess, I'd ask politically?
Yes, I don't have, I agree with Mr. Taylor. I, I want to keep it on the tax roll. I believe that we have sufficient parks to accommodate our people and our tourists. I, I agree with that statement, what he made.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that along with people after you. And I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton? You're muted.
Um, I just want to add something to Dave Bachman's comments. I retired two days ago from real estate, but I can tell you that I did check the MLS before, before that happened. And that, that property is listed for $2.7 million, Dave. And the other problem is it's listed as pending, which means they have an accepted and binding contract on it. So it would be rather difficult at this point, probably, for even if you had interest in it to buy it, for you to get in front of that offer. It could be a backup offer perhaps, but I just want to tell you that that's a pretty tall mountain to climb. So I'll leave it at that. But I know I've heard the same argument that people would like to get together and buy it. So I'll pass to the next council member now.
Councilmember Sipsec?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes, two things. Congratulations, Linda, on your retirement. Second of all, I see that there's a lot of people up skating at the park. I thank the city for getting the ice all ready and Mother Nature for taking care of it. And there really have been some good crowds up there at the park, so thank you very much.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Groundhog's Day. Unfortunately, I guess we can look forward to six more weeks of winter, starting on Thursday, from what I hear. But also for, for Linda, today at the HSCB meeting, they brought up broadband and they had a lady by the name of, and I'm probably mispronouncing her last name, Monica Schreiber. And she is doing a broadband survey because apparently the survey information that is currently out there that our people are using to justify expanding our broadband is woefully inaccurate.
Yes, it is.
So she's been working these surveys. So I, I think there's going to be some traction on that to be able to get some grants and moving forward. The whole of HSCB is, is kind of dedicated and is behind moving towards some real headway with broadband expansion in our area. Not just our county, but all the northern counties.
Right.
And then the other, Jeff, Jeff, just pick a date for us and make sure that they got skates in your size and we'll be there.
Okay, challenge accepted. All right.
Mayor Zalinski?
Thank you, Heather. I have nothing further. We'll move on to consideration for a closed session, manager's annual evaluation. City manager Ted Taylor has requested a closed session this evening as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, Section 8, parentheses A, for discussion on the city manager's annual evaluation. I want to make a comment that there'll be no action items after this closed session. At this time, council could take action to proceed to a closed session of our Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. There's our motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any concerns? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And I'll move on to a closed session.
Okay, I'm going to move anybody who still remains on to the waiting room. If you, as the mayor said, we will not have any action items after the closed session, so you can leave the meeting if you prefer. If you want to stay on, I will move you to the waiting room and admit you after the closed session. All right, give me one second here. I've got two that are still here. I'll put in the waiting room. Okay, so let me just, again, look to see who I have. I need to stop the recording. And I'm going to start recording. Okay, so now go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I need a motion to return to open session.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yep.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsec?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
If there's no, if nobody is disputing that, we're going to adjourn.
Thank you.